This time I'd like to open the zoning commission meeting of February 13th, 2008. Let the record show, all members are present. And this time I'd like to open up the floor for any public comment. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on any item not on the agenda, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to come forward? Hearing none. Hearing is closed. Any amendments to the agenda? Anybody who have anything they want to add to the agenda this time? If not, I can have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Julio Dumas. Seconded by Sherri Schliman. All in favor? Any opposition? Agenda's adopted. Like to hear any discussion and approval of the minutes from last time. A motion to approve the minutes. Anybody have any amendments to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Michael Marshon. Seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. This time I'd like to recognize Lance Brock. He's back on staff. Welcome back, Lance. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Anything we can do to help you, please call on us.
Yes.
I'm sure, I know your door is always open for us, too. And look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
This time, item number five, 5A zoning review, ID 184508, lots two, three, and four, Forest Lawn subdivision for Lakes of Ascension. Commissioners? Yes, sir. Mr. Billwood, would you please give us a little education?
We, I choose not to accept it, so this is not an exception. I think we have to have a motion to accept it, don't we? Do we make that change?
That was something that I think that we did.
Yeah. I mean, you're welcome. You put it up there. Last year.
We can't look at it.
Because...
It's the same thing I'm gonna put on overhead project.
Is it any different than what we have in our packet? Let's clarify that.
This is something I put together, so yes, I'm sure it is.
Different in what ways?
Well, I don't know what you got.
(laughing). Lance, have you looked at this?
Yes, sir. The difference is, it's a little more updated with the area itself than what I had. So it may show a few more houses than what I had on the area.
Updated in just in topo and...
That's it.
Nothing as far as lines or...
Nothing as far as lines or lot lines or anything. Just in what's maybe located on the properties.
More of a tool.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Lance, if you could help me, I'd like to turn on this machine. My name is Billwood Smith, and I'm requesting a zoning change on lots two, three, and four of Forest Lawn subdivision. And I don't know if you can see the area highlighted in yellow, right here off of 73, where my pin is, but it's a square. And that is mixed-use zoning. The block here is mixed-use zoning. And the block here is mixed-use zoning, as well as the block here. I have basically labeled what is going on along 621. 621 appears, in my opinion, to be a major thoroughfare from Interstate 10 to Gonzales or even to Livingston Parish. I'm requesting zoning change on lots two, three, and four. My lot number one is already zoned, mixed-use. I have another piece of paper, right here, which shows lots one, two, three, and four. And a portion of number two, the line cuts right through the middle. If I join those lots one and two together, I would have a picture that looks like this, which would allow me to combine the lots because I would have 59.85 percent mixed-use zoning there. However, on lots one and two, you can't really do much due to the parking requirements and so on and so forth. I have a very nice subdivision that I developed that's located behind this, these lots. And I don't want to put something undesirable. As you can see, the lots along the road, you have everything from a Shell gas station, pretty much catacuna across the street. All the land across the street is on mixed-use. The property adjoining my property is on mixed-use. They have a spa, day spa down the street, a school, Ascension Prep across the street. They have barber shops that are run from the house. As you go down the road, you have grocery stores, strip centers, hardware stores. And in my opinion, it is evident that the area is turning commercial. I have some residential lots, or these are all residential lots today, but I have some, I have a house on this road, and I was trying to weed eat the yard the other day. And it's pretty evident that the ditch needs to be piped, and it's unsafe to weed eat the grass on 621. So I am asking for y'all to rezone this property to mixed-use. And I know y'all don't like to do spot zoning. That's why I brought the map, because it's consistent with what's in the area.
Commissioners, have any questions?
This isn't a subdivision, right?
Yes.
Okay. What are the restrictions on the subdivision itself on the property and the subdivision?
I have a copy of the subdivision restrictions. They were done in 1957, recorded in March of 1957. And they have been pretty much abandoned, as well as the lot number one. And there's two other lots on the corner that already have the commercial use. Zoning is independent of subdivision restrictions. But if you would like to know what they basically say, they say that you cannot build a single-family home less than 800 and some odd square feet, and the cost must be at least $9,500. And you can only have a garage apartment if you have a servant. So they're very outdated, and they've been, they're not enforceable because they've been And when you say it's in a subdivision, the lots were created back in 1957, but they're on a main thoroughfare.
What do you propose to do with these lots?
Make the land use consistent with the adjoining property. Several years ago, I was here, and I proposed to do a very nice office building, and the planning commission approved it, and the county council denied it. Since that time, I've leased additional space where I'm currently, currently work. So I don't have any immediate plans. But I've had these lots since 1999. I'm a subdivision developer, is what I do. And I've developed approximately 500 lots since I purchased these lots and sold all of them. I deal mainly with builders. Builders aren't interested in building on the highway, and the homeowners aren't interested in living on the highway because of the, it's just, it's a highway. It's a thoroughfare.
What's on lot number five?
A home.
Lot 78, 104?
Sir?
Lot 78 and 104.
I'm not looking at y'all's map, but if that's toward the interstate from 621 and Forest Lawn, between Forest Lawn and 73, which I believe it is, those are vacant lots, which is probably part of DOTD acquired that land where they're storing those big concrete structures, like right across the street from the Shell station.
Your area photograph looks like they have two houses there. Two mobile homes?
No. One is a home. One is a home. This, for y'all's information, this subdivision consisted of, I don't know, 100-plus lots. And I got the planning commission, y'all, to, I wanted to improve the layout and increase the lot sizes, which I did, and which is now today Lakes of Ascension Crossing. It was Forest Lawn at that time.
I'd like to hear what the residents have to say.
Okay. This time I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this issue, please come forward, sign your name.
These are lots that Mr. Wood is talking about, well, Mr. Smith is talking about rezoning or right behind my house. Last year, he tried to rezone these lots, and everybody was against it. He put mobile homes, those two houses that you were talking about, those are mobile homes. And when we talked to him last year, he promised that those would be temporary homes because they were supposed to be for some evacuees to live in, but they've not been moved. I don't know what he's planning to do back there, but whatever it is, I would like for it to be very tasteful and something that would be less noisy than 73 and 621. There's a lot of traffic on 621. As you know, we're growing. And as we grow, 621 is a very heavily-traveled street, road. So if he's talking about facing Forest Lawn, he's facing, his business would be facing two other houses that's right there on Forest Lawn. They put a St. Jude home there, and then they put some other homes there. And I don't think my neighbors would want to be facing a business that, we don't have any idea what it is. And we have not, I mean, this was the first thing I heard about it, the second time that we heard about him planning to rezone these lots. But I just don't want a business in my backyard. I bought my house there, and I came here in 2005, believing that that would be residential property. Now, he can build facing Forest Lawn, not facing 621. 621 can have a fence along there, as long as the house is facing Forest Lawn. It's just a matter of changing those lots. Make it one big lot, sell it. And he has them on the market to sell as residential lots, too, by the way. That's it.
What was your name, ma'am?
My name is Patricia Moore.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Commissioners. George Valentine, Councilman for the area, and also live fairly close to this area we're talking about. Mr. Billwood, this is actually his third time, I believe, to come try to essentially move these residential lots to a situation where he could use them for business purposes. I have to rise to opposition to it, simply because, one, our infrastructure, as we all know, is in dire need of improvement. He even mentioned about weed eating dangerously on the road. The fact that it's residential primarily guarantees two, three cars coming out of a driveway, a business of which he has no idea what he's gonna sell it for. We have no idea what it's gonna do. We're having major problems in that area right now with people cutting through that subdivision and coming out where he proposes to put these, or making these two lots or three lots mixed-use where he can add a business. That particular piece of road, 621, also is a third phase of, of a improvement that the state has promised to do in the future, and I can't give you a date on it. They are supposed to three-lane 621 from 73 all the way to DePlessis Elementary School. That's the third phase of, three phases. First phase being the two entrances and exits off of the interstate to 73, and improvement of Seabro Road with a light, and the improvements of 621 and 73. The area has, many areas on 73 in the general area of this vicinity that is capable of handling businesses. One being, which I just mentioned, they fixed a three-lane 73 all the way to US 61. A lot of that area, as he pointed out, is mixed-use and commercial already. The businesses he pointed out are there, most of them have been there for years. What he didn't want to point out, too, is the fact there's about 20 homes in that area, too, up and down that 61, 621. And they want to remain residential. Several people in the subdivision asked me to come tonight and speak on their behalf. They had a death of one of the ladies, her mother passed away, she wanted to come tonight. But she urged me to, for you to please examine it and look at the situation, dealing with businesses in that area. Also, Billwood also owns, I guess, or has the capability of tying into the sewer system, if I remember right. This was a discussion last time. The sewer runs behind that, runs in for Lakes of Ascension and for Ascension Crossing. So I'd be concerned about businesses tying into a residential subdivision sewer system. I don't know what he proposes on that, but I'm sure he has a legal right to do that, too. But I'd be also concerned about the amount of sewage that would be going in there. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Hang on, Billwood, to make sure nobody else. Anyone else coming forward to speak? Okay, public hearing is closed? Okay, Billwood.
Lot number one is currently zoned commercial. It faces Forest Lawn and 621. It is the corner lot. I can currently go build mixed-use right there, facing the neighbors. I could combine lots one and two and have 150 feet on Forest Lawn, as well as 150 feet on 621. I cannot do a desirable project and meet the parking requirements, et cetera, on that little bitty piece of ground. Number two, these lots are currently not for sale. We have been in a boom since 1998, when I came to Ascension Parish. If I wanted to sell them, I could have sold them. The highest and best use for these, for lots one and two are already pretty much commercial, if we want them to be commercial. Three and four is what I really need to make something desirable. There is a fence behind three and four. There's a fence all the way along the back of all of my lots. And the sewer, it's my sewer plant that I purchased, and I have the adequate capacity and built it with additional capacity so I could not dump the sewer into the front ditch like all of the other people have. Approximately 30-something lots along that street. And that green slime in that ditch is disgusting. And that's why I have sewer available, so we do not put sewer on the road for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And like Mr. Valentine said, they are going to widen that highway. They're not widening the highway because it's a residential thoroughfare. It's a state road. So I just ask that y'all allow me to have mixed-use consistent with the other land that joins this and that is across the street from this. And as you can see from my map, there's businesses up and down the street, so that I can put something desirable besides the trailer house. And the trailer houses that she spoke of are on lots eight, nine, and 10. And then there's a spa. Okay? Which are pretty much across the street or down the, they're basically next to the spa, to the day spa, on either side of the day spa. I'm sure if y'all are familiar with that area, y'all know exactly where the trailer houses are. So as far as facing Forest Lawn with a commercial project, I could do that. I don't want to do that. And I request y'all's approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions?
Not so much a question, just a little commentary. Back in 2003, we adopted the current zoning map that we have now. I had the privilege of being appointed to the commission in 2002, so I got to see the tail end of that. I was able to sit in on some of the discussions as far as the adoption of that map. Now, we created a commercial corridor along 73 because it was felt that it could handle it. We did not create a commercial corridor along 621 because it could not handle it. Had we wanted to, we would have proposed that, but we didn't, so it wasn't. Yeah, you got a major traffic issue here, because, let's face it, I don't care if it's a state road or not, it's a substandard road. It has no shoulders, and 25 years ago, I still remember the wreck I got in on that road. And it was bad enough, if you remember, 25 years later, you, I don't like traveling 621. I know a lot of people that don't, but I know a lot of people that do. And I have already been caught in traffic past El Landry Road. And one of the little tricks that I know of that's being pulled is you have drivers who are taking Lakeway Drive, turning onto, what is this, Mindy Way Avenue, and working their way down through your development, Billwood.
And cutting out on Forest.
And cutting back out, because the people that are there don't know. They think they're coming out of the subdivision. Now, it can be argued, had you not built a subdivision, that problem would not exist. I'm not gonna get into that. The fact remains, I know, there's two people that told me. They told me themselves, they do that. And I've had numerous others complain to me about the traffic issues. I'm not for extending commercial zoning away from the corridors that have been created. It's only going to lead to further problems down the road if it is not, if the infrastructure is not adequate. And I'm sorry, the infrastructure is not adequate. The state is going to improve. The state's also going to improve 73, but we have no idea when or what those improvements are going to entail, and we have no idea how it is going to, or is it going to make any improvement? I don't know. We had a, recently, we had a development, a commercial development come before us, and one of the requests was not to add those intersections involved in that improvement in their traffic impact analysis, because they had no idea what that was going to do. And we, as a commission, had no idea what it was going to do. So your request, and I am for commercial. We need commercial. But we need commercial in the right places where it can be supported. You came to us before with this request. Yes, the commission granted an approval. But we, because it was denied, we have had the opportunity to see what has happened during that timeframe between then and now, and nothing has been improved. If anything, it's gotten worse. This request is not consistent with the overall zoning concept as adopted. Two of your lots do deal with spot zoning. Your infrastructure in this area is substandard, and I'll offer a motion to deny based on that.
Let's discuss it a little bit more?
You're welcome to discuss, but my motion is going to stand.
This is a motion to recommend denial to the parish council.
Then my motion is to recommend denial to the parish council. And, O'Neil, that kind of goes unsaid.
Right.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I mean, you know, you were here a little bit more than a year ago.
This is my third year here.
Right.
Because it doesn't make sense for...
And I guess the question is, is, since you were here a year ago, what has changed? I mean, it looks the same. Nothing's changed.
My year has changed, my year's gone by, so I get to come ask again. There, I mean, I can't help the traffic on 621. I need to pipe the ditch and put concrete there so we can make a parking lot and put a structure on the lot. It is certainly not good for residential.
Well, my point, my point is, is that, you know, the adjoining land use, you know, to the east is residential, to the south is residential. You know, I think an attempt to expand that commercial area in any way would be, would not be congruous to the quality of the surrounding area. The two commercial properties that you referred to on 621 that are to the east of you are non-conforming uses. One of them is a portion of a single-family home. It's not even a complete commercial facility. And I just, I just think to try to expand that is just not, not consistent, and nothing that you've said has changed anything from last year and, you know, the prior attempt. When I sat on the commission, because I wasn't here for the first time, but I just don't see where anything has changed. I mean, I have to, I have to agree with Mr. Marshon, that, you know, this doesn't make any sense at all to me. And, you know, so I'm gonna second the motion and continue the debate.
And I totally agree with y'all, but I just had one comment, that Mr. Smith came to us last year and said something about putting in a Burger King, which is totally, that's why we don't want mixed-use in that area. So I totally agree with y'all. And I would have seconded if Julio had not.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion to deny by Mike, Michael Marshon, seconded by Julio Dumas. Anyone oppose? Item number six, new business. Any new business? Hearing none. Item number seven, old business. Hearing none. Item number eight, subcommittee report. Mr. Dumas, anything to report?
Well, yes, sir. I continue to work with staff, and we are gonna have a meeting this month, because I think staff and I are gonna have all the maps pretty much ready to...
think staff and I are gonna have all the maps pretty much ready to present to the subcommittee meeting, the subcommittee, so we can then move on with the plan.
Very good. And item number nine.
Motion.
Second.
Michael Marshon, make a motion to adjourn, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Meeting adjourned.